The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to Courier News and Star Ledger on Tuesday, January 2, 2018, as well as posting on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office. May I have a roll call, please?
Council members on?
Present.
Good?
Present.
Hockaday?
Here.
Storch?
Here.
Tolliver?
Here.
Vice President Mills-Branson?
Present.
Council President McRae?
Present.
We have a forum seating.
Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance and remain standing before the invocation.
Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in his will with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing, please.
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and a lover of charity, to give that signed family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
May I make a motion to suspend the regular meeting so that we may adjourn to the presentation? So. Second. Ball of favor? Can you oppose? Mayor Hatton.
Well, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to further address the issue of the restructuring of government and the impact that it will ultimately have on the taxpayers of the city of Plainfield. I continue to receive calls and they continue to be blog comments that are being put out there by purveyors of misinformation, and I must also make reference to a petition that was built on a lodge in Sleet, in Centual, the people of the city. And I can't help but say that those who were behind that, they owe the people of Plainfield an apology for the misinformation, and all those signers of that petition are owed an apology, and I would hope that information that I would provide this evening will be disseminated to those signers of that petition, so they will have the facts. And so, Council, I would present to you way of analysis of the costs of the restructuring of the government that is being proposed to you this evening by way of ordinance. There is a copy of this analysis that's available for every person in here and for anyone else who needs a copy, and that can be gotten from the city clerk. We have a number of individuals that are currently on the payroll of the city. Those individuals are Carlos Sanchez, Orin Dabney, Valerie Jackson, Carl Ronnie, Ron West, Fire Chief Frank Tidwell, Shep Brown, Jazz Clayton Hunt. Those individuals, in the calendar year 2018, their salaries come to a total of $1,439. That's the salary that they would earn by the end of December 2018. For the new budget year 2019, with a 2% increase for those employees, with the exception of the fire and director, and the reason for that is because of longevity that goes into the capitation of his salary, but all those employees, plus the salary of the fire chief, come January 1, 2019, their salaries will total $1,024,455. That's the total of the salaries that these individuals will make regardless of whether or not there is a restructuring of government. That bottom line total includes the percentage increase that each one of these individuals will likely receive. So that's 2019 without the restructuring. When we come to 2019 with the proposed restructuring, the bottom line total is $1,031,993, a difference of $7,538. That would be the increase after the restructuring, and that would take into account that the fire chief, as he indicated in different media, that he will be forced under the mandatory retirement laws of the state for members of the fire division. He will work through August based on that mandatory retirement date, and of the $151,000 that he would have earned had he stayed for the full 12 months, he would earn $100,924. And so, as a result of the restructuring that I am proposing, and if the fire chief leaving at the end of August, that's a savings of $50,462. Now, for those of you who have this analysis, you will see some highlighting numbers in the column that is labeled 2019 salaries after restructuring. And as I indicated when I presented this information last month, because some writers and purveyors of misinformation tend to selectively parse out some of the information and then leaving out the facts, well, I outlined last month to this governing body that the restructuring that is being proposed would be budget neutral, budget neutral. And I indicated that the savings that we will realize as a result of moving away from a fire chief to a fire director will offset what it will cost us if we were to hire a fire director from outside, as well as the bumps in salary that two individuals who will be promoted to department head positions would receive. I pretty much made the case that it would be budget neutral. And so, if you look at the yellow highlights, you will see that the person that is being proposed to head the department that will be created, the Department of Health and Social Services, will move from 108-835 to 120-835 to bring that director more in line with other directors. And then when you go to the person that will be heading up the Department of Communications and Technology as the head of that department, that person will receive a bump of $6,000 to move her from 117-3 to 123-3, also to bring her in line with the other department directors. Now, if we choose to hire a fire director after the fire chief retires, and I'm saying after the fire chief retires, because we have no plans to replace the person that is the current fire chief, no plans. But if after the fire chief leaves, and we choose at that time to hire a fire director from outside for four months, that would remain post the fire chief's retirement, at a salary of $120,000 per year, that would result in a cost of $40,000 for those four months of 2019. And so, that's how we would get to that bottom line of $1,031 for a net change of $7,500 increase. And as far as I'm concerned, I will make the argument that that's budget neutral. But let's go further than that. If we decide, within the more likely scenario, we have five senior members of the fire division that salaries range from 145 to 135, and the likely scenario is that I will promote from within. So if we go to the last column on this spreadsheet, we have the $50,000 savings from the retirement of the fire chief. We have an increase of $12,000 to the director that will head Health and Social Services. We have $6,000 that will go to the director that will head Communications and Technology. We have zero for an outside fire director, because in this scenario, we wouldn't have an outside fire director. And promoting one of the senior members of the fire division to director with an increase of $10,000 a year to that person, prograted over the remaining four months of 2019, that person will see an increase in salary of $3,300. You will see from the last column, there is a net savings of $29,000 to the city's budget in the likely scenario. So when I say this is budget neutral, that's what I am talking about. I will take you even further. Under that same scenario, with a senior officer promoted from within, and you look at the column that says 2019 salaries after restructuring, you will see written in green the amount that the current fire chief will earn from January of 19 through August of 19. $100,000, let's round it to $101,000, it's $100,934. That amount will be another savings by hiring from within. So that $29,000 is really more like $130,000 savings. So that's the likely scenario. But what if we didn't do the most likely scenario, and we brought a fire director from outside? The $40,000 that that fire director from outside will receive for the four months of 2019, one might say, well, you're going to pay him $120 in 2020. Well, we would make up that difference by the $101,000 that we wouldn't be paying the fire chief, 80 of that will go to the director, so the 80 in the 40 that he would make in before would be the 120. The difference of $20,000 from the savings of that amount that we will no longer be paying the fire chief would pay health benefits. That's the least likely scenario. I am very inclined to promoting from within. And so, the total savings, that $29,000, when you add the fact that we wouldn't be paying that $101,000 anymore, we're looking at $130,000 savings. Now, for all those who continue to try to mislead and misinform people, and especially the lie that the petition was built on, that claims there'll be millions of dollars in costs added to the budget and to taxpayers, nothing can be further from the truth. This notion that we will go out and hire confidential aides, we can today, whether we have a restructuring or not, hire confidential aides/secretaries, call them whatever you want to call them, aides or secretaries, doesn't matter to me. We can go out today and we can hire those individuals, whether there was a charter change or not. And the point that I made a month ago is that there was miscommunication with the division, and as soon as we hired a director of personnel, and the director of personnel contacted the Civil Service and Commission, she was able to get the Civil Service Commission to confirm that the city of Plainfield has the ability and the authority to hire confidential aides/secretaries, or for want of a better word, a confidential employee for every department head that exists today, whether or not the charter was changed, that exists today, whether or not the council do this to embrace the proposed changes to restructure government in the city, we can today, and we have not, hire a confidential employee for every department head. And so, the false notion is shameful that such a lie would be, you know, put out there, and one would build a petition and get people to sign a petition on that false narrative. I think we owe the truth to the people of Plainfield. I have always been candid, I've always been open, people disagree with me at times, and I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with people who deliberately lie to the people of Plainfield and make them believe that this administration is about to raise their taxes by millions of dollars based on this restructuring. It's a false narrative, and those who have been the purveyors of that ought to apologize to those who have misled into signing a petition based on that false narrative. Council members, you will get from me the truth. You will get from me, as a financial professional, as a certified public accountant who knows numbers, you will get from me everything that I know as far as the city budget is concerned and the impact that this proposed restructuring will have on taxpayers of the city. Is it budget neutral? Absolutely, it's better than budget neutral.
Council, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Glad to answer.
Okay. Can we go back into public meetings? Second, ball of favor? All right. Public comments limited to resolutions, motions, and ordinance to be introduced on first reading. A total of 30 minutes has been allocated for the public comments limited to resolutions and ordinance being considered this evening. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. This floor is now open.
Alan Bolstein, 939 Madison Avenue. I'm here to talk about these changes in the charter, and I really should be asking the city council any questions that I have, because I think there was a quick point that was made in a letter that Mary Burwickel had penned that I read this morning, you know, pointed out that this is a legislative responsibility, and there is a balance of powers, and it seems that the legislative responsibilities are being served and handed over to the administration. That's number one. Number two, I have to say that I'm offended when the mayor starts talking about purveyors of misinformation, because it sounds to me like Trump's talking about fake news. And the fact that you have a caveat, two caveats that I heard, likely salary increases or likely promoting from within, leaves the door wide open for doing anything that you want, you know, within the constraints of the budget, which obviously can keep expanding. But this whole process was sneaky. Apparently, there was no communication with the charter people, who've been sitting patiently, you know, for the last several years, waiting, you know, to see how this thing is resolved. And then when it does go through, there were obvious changes that were made that were very questionable, like the administrative positions, or whatever you want to call them, secretaries, confidential aides, or so on and so forth. I haven't known this city to be particularly honest. I mean, they are honest in many instances, but there's also a lot of deceit that's going on here. I'm not going to, you know, go through a litany of those, but, you know, some of the issues that I've talked about over the years, there's a lot of dishonesty, there's a lot of scamming that has gone on in the city, and I see that this is just going to open up the door to more. Now, I've got a question on one particular aspect of this. There's a bureau in the Department of Public Works, there's a bureau, I think, and I forget the exact title, sewers, sanitary sewers or something. Now, I understand you've got the storm sewers, you know, where the water drains out after the rains, but there are also the sanitary sewers, which is PMUA's affair. So why is there a section in the charter that says the city is going to be responsible for sanitary stores and cleaning them out and all that sort of stuff, unless, you know, down the road, like next summer, when nobody's here at the meetings, all of a sudden, you know, there's another big plan on how to reorganize PMUA, put them back into the city. So maybe somebody can explain that particular aspect.
Ms. Burwickel.
Mary Burwickel, 1785 Sleet, Calhoun Lane. My first comment is that, my first comment is that on the 123-page resolution you guys got, if I were you, I would ask for a better resolution. I would ask to have each section that's being stricken out, stricken out, the new section put under it, and have a couple of sentences explaining why one is going away and why one is coming in. I thought that was a very difficult resolution. It was a very long resolution, I thought it was very hard to follow, but I'm not you. But if I were you, I'd ask somebody to do a better job if you had this bigger resolution. The other thing I would just like to say is that as far as the 10 confidential aides in the charter, if, whether you can do it or not, it now says you can do it in the charter, and you can do it, Mr. Mayor, without any city council oversight or anything else, except the budget, of course. But if you hire 10 people, and they each make $50,000, and they get benefits, and they get a pension, and they get a cellphone, and they get a computer, and they get a place to sit, like, pretty soon that comes to $1 million. So, I mean, that's, you know, you, I know, you're begging yourself clear how you feel about this, but that's another way to look at it. The other thing is, okay, I just heard a very, a very, not granular necessarily, explanation, or I heard part of it because I wasn't familiar, about how many, about the salaries, but what about the, what about the perks for these people? What about cars? What about cellphones? What about all that stuff? I mean, is that, that costs the city something, right? So how, how does that, how has that impacted all of this stuff? Thank you.
See no more for public comment? I get a motion to close public comment? Move. Second. Ball of favor? All right. Okay. To the comment.
Would you like your response to the question? Okay. In terms of the perks, that's a red hair. It has nothing to do with the restructuring of government. Those employees are here, are today, they have benefits, they have cellphones, and those that are allowed to use cars, they use cars. So none of that has anything to do with the restructuring that is under consideration.
Okay. Will the Corporation Council please present the items for corporations identified as R250-18?
Thank you, Council President. We have one, the Corporation Council has one item for consideration. It's a resolution authorizing additional appropriation to Bruneman, Horn, Nesperato, that is our labor council of the city, and we're seeking an additional $40,000 for Mr. Bruneman as part of the continued work as a labor. Thank you.
Are there any council questions? Councilman Tolliver?
None.
Councilman Hockaday?
None here.
Councilman Good?
Yes, Council President.
Councilman Storch?
None.
Councilman Armey?
None.
Councilman Mills-Branson?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
No.
Second. Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember O'Malley?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Hockaday?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Tolliver?
Yes.
Vice President Mills-Branson?
Yes.
Council President McRae?
Yes.
Miss Resolution's vote.
Will the Department of Administration and Finance please present their items for consideration identified as R251-18 through R257-18?
Good evening, Council. Resolution R251-18 is a resolution requesting authorization to enter into an agreement with the library, and that's the Plainfield Public Library, to expand its technology training capacity. You know, and that's a matter of investing $52,600, $35,000 to build off classroom space, and $17,000 in salary wages for construction. And this is the beginning of our rollout of the ability to provide additional digital literacy training across the city of Plainfield. There'll be subsequent resolutions coming forward as we solidify the partnerships with others to start training people in Cisco certifications, Microsoft certifications, et R252-18 is a resolution requesting authorization to amend calendar year 2018 budget by inserting items of revenue and appropriations totaling $1,5,963 in additional grant funding. R253-18 is a resolution requesting approval to issue refunds due to state tax appeals totaling $21,114.98, and that's three properties associated with that. R254-18 is a resolution authorizing adjustments to 228 tax accounts totaling $494,933.85 in tax reductions due to county void adjustments. R255-18 is a resolution asking for authorization to issue four refunds to the overpayments of taxes totaling $9,205.85. R256-18 is a resolution requesting authorization to enter into an agreement with the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey for membership into its cooperative pricing system, because we've seen a number of items that will provide us with better pricing than we've been getting on some matters. R257-18 is a resolution authorizing the submission and acceptance of a renewal contract with the New Jersey State Department of Health and Family Health Services for the Plainfield Week Program. And the contract grant amount is $747,963.
Councilman Tolliver, any questions?
None at this time.
Councilman Hockaday?
No questions.
Councilman Good?
Yes, Council President.
Councilman Storch?
On the, on the first one, 251, could I just explain where the revenues would come from, to cover that $51,000?
You know, it's part of the funding that was approved by council, you know, for program and community initiatives. That's where it's coming from.
What's the, what's the original source of the funds? Is that, is that grant?
That's right. This is, this is out of the budget.
So the $51,000 is the impact for this year?
$52,600 is the impact this year. The, the classroom space is just a one-time charge, and the library is pursuing grant funding, you know, for their instructor training capabilities going into the new going into the new year. If they don't get it, you'll see additional funding included in next year's budget.
Something extra, the, the, the staff costs would continue, but the other costs would no longer exist?
It's the amount.
That's correct. It would be more like 16,000, 17,000?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Armey?
No questions.
Mr. Millsranson?
No questions.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve these resolutions?
Move.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers. Amadi?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Hockaday?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Tolliver?
Yes.
Vice President Millsranson?
Yes.
Council President McRae?
Yes.
All the resolutions are approved.
Will the Department of Public Affairs and Safety please present their items for consideration identified as R258-18 and R259-18?
Yes, Council President. Our public director is on vacation, so I will take these two resolutions. 258-18 is a resolution requesting authorization to have an auction for unused vehicles in that division. And 259-18 is authorization to, for the fire division to be able to donate a air compressor to the fire department in the Dominican Republic.
Councilman Tolliver, any questions?
None.
Councilman Hockaday?
Yes, so for resolution 259, did we have an excess of these breathing air compressors?
That's correct. I'm sorry, Councilman, yes. We, we received, the fire department received a grant and they were able to purchase a new air compressor. The compressor that is being proposed to, to be donated is a 17-year-old compressor and it's difficult to get parts for, for that particular compressor. They, they don't use that anymore. But our, our fire department is fully equipped with that compressor.
Nothing further?
Councilman Good?
No.
Councilman Stewart?
No.
Councilman Armey?
No questions.
Councilman Millsranson?
No. They're taking, they're taking out the transport.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve these resolutions?
Some more. Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers.
Amadi? Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Hockaday?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Tolliver?
Yes.
Vice President Millsranson?
Yes.
Council President McRae?
Yes.
Resolutions are approved.
Will the Department of Public Works please present their items for consideration identified as R260-18 through R275-18?
Good evening, Council President and members of the council. It's my pleasure to present. Resolution R260-18, resolution authorizes approval for a street opening at 1009 Hillside Avenue by Public Service, Electric Gas. This is for a woman. She's 87 years old. She's putting a generator in place to help her with the health. She has poor health, so it's beneficial and we'll make sure the street is properly closed. Resolution 261-18, resolution authorizes approval to utilize the Morris County Co-op for milling and paving of several roadways in an amount not to exceed $1.8 billion. This is for 28 streets that we're going to mill and pave, totaling like close to eight miles roadway. It's beneficial to the city of Plainfield. Resolution R262-18, resolution authorizes award of contract to top-line construction corp for the 2018 roadway resurfacing project of Sumner Avenue in the amount not to exceed $616,025.15. This is a DOT grant as well as some capital funded receipt to take care of the street and to curtail and accept everything that's needed in that area for that. Resolution 263-18, this resolution authorizes change order number one, finally reducing the original contract amount by $23,030.94 for the service of West Third Street, Phase Three, from Grant Avenue, Liberty Street, and Mullenburg Place for a top-line construction. It was a savings there of $23,030.94 for this project. Resolution authorizing change order 264-18, an amount of $38,439.85 to your way construction for the Silverfield Construction Project. This change order is due to additional unsatisfactory soil that has been removed, slabbing for the bleaches, et cetera. So that's what that change order came for, was all of the same work, the amount of soil. Resolution authorizing 266-18, authorize award of contract to Halcon Inc. for Mill Campbell Tennis Courts Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed $208,529. This project was for tennis courts. It's going to be all kinds of resurfacing on the project. Nets, poles, fencing, etc., et cetera. It's going to be removed and reinstalled, serviced. Resolution 266-18, I mean, 267-18, resolution authorizes award of professional service contract for Nolley Associates Inc. for the North Adams Industrial Mall, Phase One, costing an amount of $27,000. This is for design of their project. They're going to have to, going to make sure the design is right. We're going to have to refill the old vaults throughout, like 25 vaults over North Avenue. This is part of the sidewalk repair. Resolution 268-18, resolution in support of Governor Phil Murphy's environment transition advisory committees initiative for electric vehicles. This is something that we're looking to do down the road with energy to promote and support what Governor Murphy's trying to do with electric vehicles throughout the state of New Jersey. We'll be the 71st municipality within the state to join. And if something comes on this year down the road, of course, for years down the road, for better, any grant fund that's available will be able to accept that grant funding for those type of vehicles. Resolution 269-18, resolution authorized the purchase of two new 2019 Ford F-250 pickup trucks in state contract amount not to exceed $60,047. These trucks will be able to apply our spreads, et cetera, to help us with our snow season, to enhance our fleet. Resolution 270-18, resolution authorized the purchase of three new 2019 Ford F-50 dump trucks in state contract amount not to exceed $132,000. Again, this will help our fleets with vehicles, enhance everything we're doing with snow, et cetera. Plows, spreads, and we're replacing these trucks as well. Resolution 271-18, resolution authorized the purchase of five new 2018 Dodge Mercedes in state contract in amount not to exceed $89,950. This equipment will be used in purchase by our health inspectors as well as our inspectors within the Department of Inspections. Resolution 272-18, resolution authorized the purchase of one new 2018 Elgin Street sweeper in amount not to exceed $216,079.35. This is to help us enhance and do more courage side sweeping throughout the city with the sweep we currently have and that, just add, so we can do a lot more of that. This is from Timlin Equipment. Resolution 273-18, resolution authorized the purchase of four new sterile Conny Column lifts in the amount not to exceed $42,000 with $19. These are the lifts that we can change to open more work in the house without equipment to repair it. The lifts are some for our projects, it's beneficial to us for everything that we do. Resolution R274-18, resolution authorized 15 lean placements due to emergency vacuums totaling $11,094.85. Resolution R275-18, resolution authorized refunds of extra payments in amount not to exceed $5,000 in sections.
Any questions, Councilman Tolliver?
Yes. 260, the street opening. I know that sometimes when we allow companies to open our streets that we've paved, that they don't do a really good job resurfacing them back. Could we make sure that it looks the way it did before they opened them?
And that's a good question, Councilman, yes. What we're talking about that today, you have to, for every, we're monitoring, make sure we get this missed that we do monitor when they do it, right? Yes, make sure it's done.
Okay. The new sweeper, are you retiring the old one?
Uh, this is just to expand and enhance what we're doing, the citywide street sweeper.
I got a complaint from a citizen that one of the street sweepers, like 5:00 AM in the morning, was waking him up, not up at that hour of the morning, so I don't know if it's noisy. But they did complain that when they do downtown, they kind of do rose up and they said it's waking him up at 5:00 AM, so.
And this is for Councilman, and I hear the sweeper doesn't make that top noise, it's like, it's like a dog, a truck that revs and this. So it just sweeps it, it's silent, I understand. No, we don't have one with a mouth that's saying, "Oh, no." It works for the, I'm just saying that's not, that won't be the issue. But we're trying to sweep the downtown road. Some people do get up there, it looks, you know, present.
Excellent. 271-18, you said these parts are for health inspectors and who else are for the inspection department?
Inspection's wrong, health's right, yes.
No further questions?
Councilman Hockaday?
Just a comment. You know, I am, I do really like 268-18, supporting of the governor's environmental initiatives. I'm trying to embrace electric vehicles. You know, I think for the sake of the environment, it's important we move towards sustainable energy sources and eliminating pollutants on the, on the environment. And, you know, I just wish that it could happen quicker. I see that we're purchasing vehicles and none of these seem to comport with that resolution. I understand it'll probably take some time to gear up, but, you know, I encourage you to begin, once we adopt this resolution, to, to begin to look at, you know, that environmental friendly transport.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Good?
Director wants to adopt it, how, what's your timeframe on the environmentally friendly vehicles?
That's only based on time, Councilman, we're looking for, you know, two more towns to join. Right now, we'll be at the 71st town. So we're waiting for more towns out of the state, out of the politics, municipalities in the state. We're waiting for us to come online, so we're happy to do that, so. It's in the beginning stages right now. But we want to support everything the state's trying to do to promote renewable vehicles, so.
Well, that's the, well, how many sweepers does the city have?
Right now, it should be our second, it's been two.
I'm sorry?
Second, two, it's been two. We'll get to the new one.
Okay.
Councilman Stewart?
No questions.
Councilman Armey?
Regarding 262, I'm just curious, when is the projected end date for the summer resurfacing?
Sorry, Councilman?
When's the projected end date?
Since start date, or?
End date.
End.
End date, I'm not, I'm not sure what the end date will be, because right now, you know, it's going to take some time to get together, design is on, and we're going to get started. Hopefully, we're on next week or two, and we're trying to get it done, I mean, we're going to try to start, you know, where the school is, I think they missed the school over there. So it doesn't interfere anything and they won't move down further. But give you the other thing, for the base on, of course, weather permitting, you know, et cetera, when they're doing it, you know, they pay me. Because they're going to be tearing out, it's going to be scurrying, moved, trees, et cetera, a lot of concrete work and also the, and all the day pushing. So hopefully, over the next month and a half to two months, we should be at that.
Okay, and resurfacing, resurfaces in general, when do you wind those down? Or would you say around early October?
But, yes, probably the end of October.
Okay, yes. No further questions.
Councilman Millsranson?
No questions.
May I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmembers. Amadi?
Yes.
Good? Hockaday?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Tolliver?
Yes.
Vice President Millsranson?
Yes.
Council President McRae?
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Will the Department of Economic Development please present their items for consideration identified as R276-18 through R279-18?
Good evening, Councilmembers. Resolution R276-18 is a resolution authorizing approval for the implementation of the Report It app as a platform for reporting important information to the city of Plainfield in an annual amount not to exceed $5,400. The app is costing us $450 a month. Resolution R277-18 is a resolution amending and supplementing resolution 246-18. Last month, you approved the planning board to reexamine the TODD West redevelopment plan and provide recommendations. We're adding to that the property commonly known as 225-231 West Second Street. It is a city-owned property. It's currently housing by Lingual Daycare Center. And that lease expires on August 31st. And this property, we will be looking at as part of the area in need of investigation. Resolution R278-18, we continue to look at South Avenue and what improvements we can make there. So this is a resolution authorizing the planning board to conduct an area in need of redevelopment investigation of properties identified on the tax map sheet 38 as block 624, lots 1213, and block 625, lots 28 to 33 and 35, with the respective addresses, to determine whether the planning board finds that the property satisfies the local redevelopment and housing law in need criteria and should be cleared in area in need of redevelopment. R279-18 is a resolution authorizing the application and acceptance of a Union County, Greening of Union County 2018 matching grant for the purchase of street trees in amount not to exceed $10,000.
Any questions, Councilman Tolliver?
Just one brief clarification on 276-18. Is this an upgrade to the app or is this a whole new app? What, what information are we using now?
It is a, it's a whole new app. And this particular app allows residents to use their phones, download the app and report any incidents to the city. And so that's what this application does.
If this is a trial, is it permanent?
This will be a permanent, we're proposing a year contract at this point, so this will be permanent.
No further questions?
Councilman Hockaday?
Regarding 277-18?
Yes.
What, what, what plans, what are, what are the plans for the existing tenant there, this Lingual Daycare Center?
They are moving to the Amory property, so it's Hope's Lingual Daycare Center. So at the end of August, their lease expires with us and they will be moving to the Amory. There's additional work going on around the Amory property to add more classrooms.
Oh, were they doing a construction over there?
Yes, on Lingual and Seven.
Thank you.
Councilman Good?
279, is there a breakdown about how many trees we will be receiving for that 10,000?
Okay, just a minute, pass them good. I don't have the resolution, the breakdown, the number of trees. Okay, approximately 30 trees, so 15 will be planted by the city and 15 by the county.
Thank you, and that's, of course, throughout the city, they will be planted, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Councilman Stewart?
On resolution 276, the reported app, is that primarily for safety issues? Or is this, do you see this being used for reporting code violations or abandoned properties, et cetera?
It's for reporting any issues that may concern the residents. It could be a property issue, it could be a safety issue, all of the above.
And which department or office or staff person will we, um, permit so to implement with?
This is going to be coming through the IT department.
IT group, so they'll want to live?
Yes.
And when do you anticipate the story?
That's a good question. The startup time, once you approve it, it should take us no more than two to four weeks to implement the app.
Thank you.
As a resume, I'll provide a little bit of clarification of that. So once we install the reported app, it will be linked to different departments. So if the, if the report is a matter of a down tree, that will automatically go to the DPW. The DPW will handle it for them. So it will be a different, different department being, being, receiving that information. In addition to that, that application will allow the administration to track what's the, what's the time we, it's taking for us to respond to the, to the residents' input. The, the implementation could take as little as two to three weeks. But again, it, it is a matter of us coordinating with the reported app, the information we want being a place on the application. So I would say about three, three to four weeks to be able to implement it.
Councilman Armey?
Yeah, so 276-18, it's on the running. Are you guys going to have any campaign? Are you guys gonna have any campaigns to let, you know, residents know, these are resource meetings?
Uh, yes, we will be playing it on all of our social media.
Thank you, no further questions.
Councilwoman Mills-Rasmussen.
No question, that's a good path, Councilwoman.
May I have a motion to approve these resolutions?
Go ahead.
Second. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers, Armani?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Hackett Day?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Tolliver?
Yes.
Vice President Mills-Rasmussen?
Yes.
Council President DeCray?
Yes.
Residential Department.
Okay. Introduction of ordinance on first reading. We now come to the ordinance on first reading. Clerk, will you please read ordinance MC twenty eighteen dash twelve by title?
MC two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-one is the ordinance to repeal and replace the signed regulations within section seventeen, colon, nine, fifty-one, sign, and seventeen, colon, eleven, seven L, buildings, architectural, non-residential standards, awnings, and canopies of chapter seventeen, the land use of the city of Plainfield.
Are there any questions on council, Councilwoman Tolliver?
None.
Councilman Holliday.
Um, I just think you should describe in, in plain language what they're doing. Is it, is it beautification of some sort? I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure it's beneficial for us.
Okay, so, um, this ordinance creates standards and uniformity and eliminates some of the sign clutter that we have in the city. It also establishes relationship between building facades and the public ground. Uh, it establishes relationships between form and mass of building and between signs and scales of buildings. So if you have a large building, you can have a larger sign. If you have a smaller building, it's a smaller sign. So it does do relationship to the building facade. It also provides more graphics, diagrams, and sample signs so that people are very clear about what signs are permitted and not permitted. Uh, so that's part of what the ordinance does. And so again, uniformity, clarity, uh, related to our sign ordinance. So you'll have an ordinance, but you will also have a document, uh, that is pictorial with the sign standards and requirements.
Thank you. Councilman Wood.
So it would be less clutter?
Less clutter in your.
Straight to the point.
I beg your pardon?
It would be less clutter and straight to the point.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Storch.
Does the sign ordinance apply to the commercial district or the whole city? I mean, what, how's it targeted, different at all?
Uh, this is targeted to the commercial district, but it does apply to the whole city. So for example, churches and their signs that they like to put up as well. So it does apply to the whole city, but it really focuses in on commercial properties.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Holliday?
No questions.
Councilwoman Mills-Rasmussen?
No questions.
I will now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers, Armani?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Hackett Day?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Tolliver?
Yes.
Vice President Mills-Rasmussen?
Yes.
Council President DeCray?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted on first reading, and a public hearing is ordered to take place at the next regular meeting on Tuesday, September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Clerk, will you please read ordinance MC twenty eighteen dash twenty-two by title?
MC two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-two is the ordinance amending chapter two, articles four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, and creating chapter two, articles twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and establishing salary ranges for business administrative and department directors.
Are there any questions from the council, Councilwoman Holliday?
Yes. I would like to know, what is the benefit of hiring a director, fire director, versus keeping a fire chief? I know when firemen initially become firemen, their goal is always to try to achieve, to become a fire chief. Also, I would like to know, are there any other municipalities that have gotten rid of their fire chief and hired, um, directors? I know briefly we found out there's going to be a benefit, or potentially a benefit, to have a director versus a fire chief upon the retirement of our present chief. I'm just in disagreement with it. Um, I also think it's very important that certain fires that we have in the city are aware about and other townships kind of help out. I know it's important for the fire chief, I feel, to be there. My suggestion would be that if we don't call for a test, a civil service test, or to place the existing fire chief upon his retirement, that perhaps we look at hiring from within, a deputy chief, and perhaps changing the charter where they can become a fire chief. But I think it's very important, just to put the morale of the fire department period, that we keep a chief in place. I've heard all the arguments, and I don't even mind, um, that I feel that to get rid of the fire chief and replace him with a director is one thing, but I still think, if you wanted a fire director, I still think we should keep, um, chiefs in place. Um, if you hire someone within the fire, fire deputy, then that would be a savings right there also. Because his salary would no longer, he wouldn't be happy to, he wouldn't have two salaries if he made one of our fire deputies. Keep them as a chief, so, so it still would, while that would be a savings in, in months. That's my comment.
Well, thank you for the question and for the comments, Councilor and Tolliver. I agree with you, just with everything you said, except two things. One is that I disagree with your position on retaining the position of fire chief. And two, I disagree with your position about the morale in terms of how people aspire to be the highest person within the organization. That will still be there, that will not go away. In explaining the numbers earlier, I said that the most likely scenario is to hire from within. And that is still my position. So people who come into the department as a new recruit can aspire to the highest level within the police department, whether you call it a chief or whether you call it a director. But the most important thing in moving away from the position of chief to director is that it creates a level of accountability that does not exist with the position of chief, whether you're talking police chief or whether you're talking fire chief. And so this is a decision that is being well thought out, it is not personal, and as was explained earlier, the current fire chief has made it very clear about his mandatory retirement date. And so that is being respected by this administration. But it is this administration position that by moving away from the position of fire chief to director, it creates greater accountability, and that's the overriding factor.
Will you respond?
No. Councilman Holliday.
No questions, but I, you know, I anticipate we'll hear, um, from the fire community at some point regarding their beliefs.
Speak loud and clearly, speak it.
I'm sorry, the mic's not here. Uh, no, no questions, but I, I, I do imagine that we'll have an opportunity here from, uh, the fire community and, and their thoughts on, on it as well. But I have no questions or objections.
Councilman Wood? No questions, got it. Councilman Storch.
Yeah, mainly comments. I, I think the, the way that this whole thing started, the process for, oh, yeah, I'm getting this reworked to the point where it is, could have been done better. I think it, it should have included the council at the beginning. However, I didn't let that, um, concern dissuade me from looking at this objectively. And I think this reorganization is good for the city. So I, I think, you know, and I urge people to just try to separate the process from the proposal. And what I see is, you know, after many years in, you know, working, uh, in service of the city, we've had this very unwieldy administrative process between departments. And it was kind of like, always a hodgepodge, and we always switch things around every few years, but it never solved anything. It just kind of shifted the, um, the overburden on a few department directors we had. And I'm sure it's affected our efficiency over the years. This is much more sensible. So I'm gonna support it, even though I don't agree with everything in it. I agree with, just, I pretty much agree with everything. And I appreciate that we, uh, we got some very clear information tonight on, on the cost from the mayor. That's, that's, I think that does a lot to clear the air. I, I don't think we need seven departments. I, I would have, you know, supported six, and I, and I'm gonna vote for this because, um, it was pretty clear that a motion to separate this into votes for each department was not gonna fly. So I am gonna vote yes, but I, I do think that, you know, one department too many. But, you know, overall, it's gonna be a very big improvement for the city. The only question I have right now is on the, um, and I think this might have been made clear, but I just wanna make sure that, and, and from the administration, for two thousand and eighteen, that are we bringing in any new administrative assistants or whatever job title we are, call it a confidential aide secretary, whatever, you know, the title? Are we bringing in any new positions for two thousand and eighteen?
Thank you, Councilman Storch. We've, we've actually done that in two thousand and eighteen, and had nothing to do with the charter, but we've done that in two thousand and eighteen for the purpose of making sure that the city continues to run and that the efficiencies, the confidentiality is in place. And so we have done that already in two thousand and eighteen.
When did we do that?
We've done that over the last six months or so.
Okay, so my question is really going forward for the rest of the year. Are we bringing in any new positions of this type?
I think of answering that question many times, that the administration has no plans to go out and hire ten confidential aides, secretaries, personnel. We have no plans on doing that. We have no plans on hiring the confidential aides that the charter empowers us to do. But I made the, I made a point several times that we have right now, without this charter, the ability to hire confidential aides slash secretaries slash people slash employees.
So are we going to hire one or more additional positions of this type for the rest of two thousand and eighteen?
Okay. No. Thank you. Who's your name?
Councilman Holliday?
No questions.
Councilman Mills-Rasmussen?
I just wanna make a statement. In terms of being a former administrator, I really applaud the administration for the new organizational chart because I see accountability there. And I know that people in the audience and in Plainfield have complained about efficiency and effectiveness at its spin, some departments have been too large to deal with it. So now, what I'm looking forward to is seeing that this effectiveness and efficiency is happening. And when you have enough people in the right places and you have the opportunity to do the evaluations you need to do to deal with those who are not willing to do their job. So I'm really happy to see the new organization.
Okay, I will now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please? Army, second.
Councilmembers, Armani?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Hackett Day?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Tolliver?
No.
Vice President Mills-Rasmussen?
Yes.
Council President DeCray?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted on first reading. Public hearing is ordered to take place at the next regular meeting of the Plainfield City Council on Tuesday, September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen.
A total of sixty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed will be limited to five minutes. The floor is now open.
Hi, good evening. Nancy Kim, Rollin' Twenty-Nine, Merle, Iowa. As well as you know, I like to do research. And recently, I came across some new information which I feel I need to make the city and the city council aware of. In the minutes of the New Jersey Healthcare Facility Financing Authority of May twenty-four, two thousand and eighteen, on page ten, which I will have a copy for all the council members and the mayor, there's a notation that CHA, Community Healthcare Associates, has filed an application to the Department of Health to acquire the Memorial Hospital of Salem County with the intent of continuing to operate the Memorial Hospital of Salem as a nonprofit inpatient care hospital. CHA is the redevelopment of the Mullenberg property as indicated in the minutes. These minutes were not available to be presented to Judge Catherine Dupree at the time of the June eighth, two thousand and eighteen order to show cause. They only showed up on the internet after the fact. This is a significant new fact. Why were and why are the area residents of Mullen, uh, why were the area residents of Mullenberg being treated differently from the area residents of, of Memorial Salem County? It is so unfortunate that there are deed restrictions on the Mullenberg property because perhaps if the deed restrictions did not exist, perhaps negotiations could have been reopened with CHA to open a small, limited number bed hospital to relieve the stress on the other local hospitals. It's my understanding from people that have gone to JFK that a lot of times they're on divert and, and they cannot accept any more patients, even though they had a hundred fifty-two point nine million dollar mortgage on the Mullenberg property in order to expand that hospital. Obviously, it wasn't expanded enough because they had been on divert, I don't know how many times. I will do an open request to the Department of Health to find out. But recently, a, a city resident was there, the Mullenberg. Um, and to the efforts, to my tenure efforts and other efforts of citizens in this town, prior to the, um, order to show cause, Hackensack had to go out and privately bond to take the mortgage off the Mullenberg property. The mortgage is no longer on the property. But it, it's really disconcerting to me that this information came out after the fact because perhaps, you know, CHA is, it seems to be pretty accommodating. And if they're reopening, or if they're attempting to reopen a hospital in Salem County, there's no reason why, but we have deed restrictions for ten years. That, that's not even negotiable. It's really unfortunate that the city council and the city had that in the RFP. And according to the court order from the judge, even though I questioned it, um, she said that was between the buyer and the seller, but the city was part of it too. Um, my other statement is, and I appreciate the mayor tonight explaining about the, um, recharter, but it's hundred twenty-three pages. I hope every page is read by the city council because the RFP, I found the deed restrictions buried on page ninety-eight. So go to the last page and work back, please. Um, also, it's really unfortunate because Michelle Obama always says when they go low, we should go high. Well, in the latest minutes that were online for the New Jersey Healthcare Facility Funding Authority, Hackensack University Medical Center entered into a host community agreement to pay four million dollars per year to the city of Hackensack for the next six years and little property taxes. I guess it only settles for a little bit over six hundred thousand dollars. Thank you very much.
Avery Zell, CAF card junior, 1448 Columbia Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. Good evening, president, councilmembers, and mayor, and the people of the city of Plainfield. I'm coming to the city to ask if you would like to, if I can get your help in partnership with me in what I call Prostate Cancer Month here in Plainfield. September is the prostate cancer awareness month. And I'm trying to bring more awareness to men about prostate cancer. I've been doing some research. Unfortunately, I'm following, I'm dealing with it now. So with that, dealing with it, I understand it's talking to people about the lack of understanding, especially in the African-American community, about prostate cancer. And the simple thing is early detection, the best detection. So that's my goal right now. And I've been doing a few things. And I have a date already, September 12. I have a permit where I'm doing a prostate cancer free screening for men. We got different people coming in, just wanting to speak. But I also like the city to be a part of it. And I'd like to see what we can do about getting banners. That's my main cause of coming here, is to see if we can get two banners on Park Avenue and also on Front Street, where you put the two areas at. If any way possible, we can get banners up there saying that it's prostate cancer month. So like I said, I've done all the labor. I got the permit. I have the free screening coming in from the hospitals. I got urologists, radiologists coming to speak. I've done all my labor that needs to be done. I got my permit. Everything that's done, I've done it. But now I'm coming to you guys to see if I can leave with the banner that we can put down. And anything else that you can do with our health bay or department here in Plainfield. Okay? And if anyone can get back to me, yes and no. But if not, you know, we definitely want to still continue to do it without the banner. But I hope you can help me. All right?
Council President, I met earlier this evening with Mr. CAF Card. And I think that this is a very important topic. And I am here to say to you that I support this initiative 100% and would love for the governing body to give special consideration. And the special consideration that I'm asking is that your agenda has been set and has been dealt with. And we would like to have banners hung across the street. And I believe it needs approval from the governing body. So if the governing body can make a rare exception and have a work on item, approving a resolution to hang banners across the street, given that this, that September is prostate cancer month, that the event that Mr. CAF Card spoke about is scheduled for September 12, I would appeal to the governing body for special consideration. You know we don't do this, but if you would allow for a resolution to be walked on, which Mr. Minshew can quickly put together, one or two paragraphs, then we'll do it. But I'd like to speak for myself.
Mr. Mayor, we consider it a verbal resolution that is acceptable. If there's a motion, we'll say it. Mr. Mayor, Council President, would that be acceptable to me?
Is it council people?
Yes.
Council President, if I just sort of understand, the motion would be to hang it out?
Yeah, one on Park and one on Front.
On what date specifically?
Well, if we can, the program's in September 12. So the sooner that we can get the word out, the better, so.
Certainly we can get the banner, eh?
Skippy? Where's it going to be held at? Right here in the city hall. Right in front, yeah. We have a permit for it right here in the front, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on September 12. Like I said, once we get the AOK and the flyers and all, you make sure to get a copy.
And we'll work on getting the banner by the end of the week. So, you know, the administration will accept. Have been commissioned to hang the banner from what day is Friday?
Today is the...
Seventeenth.
On July 17th.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you all. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Council President, we'll just need a motion second. Whenever you take that, I'll move it.
I move it. I move your amendment. Second, you're right.
Move it, second, it's all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council.
Good evening, everybody, again. Howard Waltz, 939 Madison Avenue. I don't think that a new cadet in the police department, or police division, I should say, or the fire division, is going to aspire to a political appointment, you know, where they could be let go at a moment's notice, you know, because somebody likes somebody better. Or, you know, the term changes over after four years and we're gone. So I think that basing an assumption that, you know, these people who are coming up through the ranks are going to aspire to something other than a chief is a little bit misguided. In fact, I just read an article that I don't think, I don't remember whether it was in my central New Jersey Tap or, you know, one of the other blogs. And it was a joint meeting or such, you know, where they had members of the police departments from several communities. And it was this police chief, this police chief, that police chief, and our police director. So you would think that, you know, if this was that important to make those type of changes, everybody would be doing it. Now, one thing I noticed, Councilman Hackett Day said, and I think he said he expects that the fire department and those people will weigh in. But why, if he expects that they're going to weigh in, why did he vote today for it? Because by the time they weigh in, it's going to be all set in stone. That doesn't make sense. Number three, you didn't answer my question. I asked a specific question about the sewers and the way that it's mentioned in the charter and these changes. And it says the city is going to be maintaining the sewers, the storm sewers, and the sanitary sewers and the pumping section. My understanding is at least the sanitary sewers and that pumping station are under the purview of PMU. So there seems to be a contradiction there. You know, I'm a little bit disturbed. I know there were some questions. This is a big to-do, to make a change like this. That charter commission went through months of meetings that were open to the public. And, you know, they got a fair representation of people who would show up and they nodded every meeting. But I think that this needs to be, these changes really needed to be disseminated more broadly, just to avoid so-called fake news that the mayor was talking about, using another term, but essentially that's what it was. And it's too important to just kind of willy-nilly vote on this. I don't believe that any of you have probably read through the whole thing. And like Nancy, before I said, you find something on page 98. Of course, it's usually stuck there on page 98 because nobody gets that. So the way this whole thing has worked out, I think it's bad. I think that there are too many doors that can be opened that will end up costing us more money. It may not be this year, it may not be next year, but it may come in 2021 or it may come at some point, you know, down the road. So it's something to consider. You know, it's unfortunate, though, that you all pretty much in lockstep, you know, voted in favor of this, which is basically a major undertaking on very short notice. That said, when I was on the Seabag nine, I think it was nine years ago, so. We recognized at that point, you know, that particularly in the area of social services, we needed more focus, more efficiency, more people who knew what they were doing. Of course, now, you know, that was before we had Shep Brown and that was before we had Rashara Fuller or Winona Cleveland, one of the program writers. And basically, it was a backwater for the city. And it was run by, you know, somebody who it was his 20th responsibility. Al Westen at that point. So, yeah, at that point, it was important. But I don't know that just, you know, making this bureaucracy even more so than it is now is necessarily going to improve anything. Thank you.
Good evening. Brian Sears, 1787 Berwood Lane. I'd like to go on record regarding a resolution that was passed that has the potential to have a negative impact on my property values. The resolution that was passed established boundaries for Sleepy Hollow. The boundaries, which I'm not certain who or how they were defined, cut off my block of six houses. By establishing these boundaries, if I wish to sell my home, I can no longer say I live in Sleepy Hollow. My home built in 1936. Sleepy Hollow was established in the early 1930s. My home was built by Ernest Han, which you may or may not know. Ernest Han owned the farm which Sleepy Hollow was built on. All right? So when I bought my home 12 years ago, the realtor, the listing said, "In the heart of Sleepy Hollow." Now I'm no longer in Sleepy Hollow. I really could care less about the signage that is going on. But I am deeply concerned about my property values. You kicked me out of Sleepy Hollow, haven't reduced my property taxes. All right? I don't quite understand how it could be done. Go to the library and you do the research of where Sleepy Hollow came from, what it is. If you knew my block, you can't say we're not Sleepy Hollow. You know, if you look at a lot of the listings in the area, people like to say "Quarter of Sleepy Hollow, near Sleepy Hollow, edge of Sleepy Hollow." I'm in Sleepy Hollow. But because of this resolution, I'm no longer in Sleepy Hollow. Pay the same property taxes, live the same address. And I'd like some help from you guys to include Berwood Lane back into Sleepy Hollow. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that. Yes, Mr. Sears, I appreciate your comments. There is discussion about redrawing the map to include that one block because I think it was inadvertently left out originally. The original map was so expansive, it went way beyond what just about everybody thought of as Sleepy Hollow, well, now the Kensington. And when it came before city officials, it pretty much agreed that they had, the map had to be redrawn. And when it was redrawn, I think Berwood Lane inadvertently got left off. So, you know, we, there's a process that we'll go through to add it back into the map. It'll go before the planning board in September. Hopefully you can make that meeting. And then we'll come back to the council for a resolution to redraw the map on Plainfield Street.
I'm not as tall as... I just like to, I'm 8'11" and I live at 1781 Berwood Lane. I lived at 1046 Sleepy Hollow Lane. Bought that house in 1976 and I started teaching school in 1972. So I have been a fixture here for almost 15 years. And as a resident of Sleepy Hollow, when we moved from our smaller house to our bigger house, which had four years pond in the backyard, we were told it was part of Sleepy Hollow. And like what, to reiterate what Mr. Sears stated, it was all fine saying we were, we lived in Sleepy Hollow. However, the friends of Sleepy Hollow in making an official map changes the complexion and boundaries of Sleepy Hollow. So we've been excluded. And like he said, it does impact my property values. And I think it's a long time resident. I've done a lot of research, a lot of stories. I lived next door to people who were original owners of their homes that were built in 1931. And this was always Sleepy Hollow. So I've been speaking to Councilman Mr. Storch. And I think another neighbor spoke to Councilman Mills. And I think Armani was, was also included in that. And as I said, when the official map was made legally, I cannot say I sleep, live in Sleepy Hollow. So we ask for your consideration. As a taxpayer and a unpaid resident, I think we'd like to have this reconsidered.
We want you to go home, knowing that we have not prepared the calls. We're just dealing with the process.
Okay.
So if you're on the phone, I know the three you said you spoke to are supportive. I can't speak for the others, but it's a process.
I just spoke, we really are concerned because one of the residents, Becky Perkins, was across the street. She called me from Kansas today.
I emailed her last night about...
Okay. Oh, so that, she is great, she's awesome. For us to represent her as well tonight, but we just wanted to make our promises known.
Council President, just for the sake of the residents and the council, sir, just a little bit of history on the creation of the boundaries of Sleepy Hollow. That was a process, approximately two years ago, whereby the, an application was made first to the planning board. The planning board reviewed the boundaries and also in concert with the Historic Preservation Commission. And from that made a recommendation to the city council, which was ultimately adopted. So the council has always, with regards to the boundary issues, taken the recommendations from planning. So when we talk about the process, the process really needs to begin back with planning.
We have residents.
There's no, there's no back.
Just for the benefit of the council, once planning makes a recommendation, the council would then entertain that, the extension of the boundaries, if that is a recommendation, council. I mean, I'll go up to the planning board and say...
Yeah, we'll, we'll take it too.
Yes, we, I made the recommendation, just like the planning board to get all of that.
Absolutely. Which is the process we used last night.
For the sake of the residents, what's the date of the next planning board meeting? Can anyone say that?
The next planning board meeting is September 6. The planning, yes, September 6. And where is that? In City Hall Library. Uh, 7:30. 30, 7:30, 7:30. Go to 30.
Council, so I wish I could go in first, be with the application process. We're showing, would you bother to read the message?
I don't know if they heard it, but I'll make sure they get the message.
Dan Dunn, 1095 Kenyon Avenue, Plainfield, of course. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mr. Sears, Mr. Correct Council President, and all you other wonderful council people. I've been here for a while and sitting back watching and observing the progress as I see it from my eyes. First of all, I want to start and say, Mr. Mayor, we had our differences over the last years, but I have to be very honest and say, I have seen a vast improvement of many, many different things in the city as it relates to our public safety, as it relates to the fire division, as it relates to just the people dealing with one another in general. I'm glad to see that we have a council that's somewhat on the same page with the mayor trying to move us forward. If you continue to do what you're doing, I think it would be in the messages of all the citizens. One thing that I do want to highlight to you is I feel that there's still a disconnect with a certain segment of folk here that just feel they might be left out. So my recommendation to you, sir, is to try and put a forum together with the ministry, all of the different pastors from all the different denominations of the churches in the city, and put them on the defensive and ask them, what could you do as the mayor, the elected mayor of all the people of Plainfield, what could you do to make life better for them in the areas in which they may feel needs to be improved? them in the areas in which they might feel needs to be improved?" And I think once that takes place, they could pass that on to their congregations at that particular time, come up with an understanding through the religious community and let them know that you're really not as bad as people think you are. "I think that you're doing a fantastic job. I didn't like you for a long time, but your movement is good. People are doing what you're doing. Yeah, that's it."
Do know that you already plan to have an audience with the ministers in Plainfield. That's already in the works.
Good evening. Sam Sekita Cooper, Ninety Borough Boulevard, Plainfield, of course. Hey, everyone. In regards to the R two seven six dash eighteen, I would like for you to consider that there are several residents who do not have social media or smartphones or that speak the English language. So, please consider that strongly when you are voting out that application. I just wanted to bring some attention to the inner workings at the Division of Inspections. I'm a homeowner and I'm an investor. I've been in real estate now for twenty-plus years, so I'm very familiar with the process for the inadequacies of the process at the Division of Inspections. When a person is purchasing a property and that property does not meet all the requirements to receive a clear certificate of occupancy, there's money that has to be held in escrow. The process then is, once you close, you then have to contact the Division of Inspections to have that money released to you. If you do not have your receipt, you are not going to get your money back. And the burden of proof is on the homeowner. Now, in order for you to get paperwork, in order to get to the closing, you have to provide this escrow of money. When the inspector does his final inspection, it should be his responsibility to initiate the request for that money to be released to the homeowner. The process as it stands right now, you have to come in, you have to provide a receipt, you have to then wait for it to go to a specific department, for them to then issue a purchase order that then gets mailed out to you. You then have to mail that back, that then goes back upstairs to the Division of Inspections. And before all of that can even take place, the resolution has to come here in order for that money to be released. It can be a three-month process. And it should not be so in this day and age of the technology that we have available to us, that the person that is investing in our city should have to wait for money that they have put up in good faith to be released to them. I heard you talk about purchasing of new cars. I heard you talk about technology at the library, but I didn't hear anything about citizenship. I didn't hear anything about you making it better for us to be able to come to you and use the facilities. I didn't hear anything about what can be done to make it easier for us to communicate with you. So, I would just ask that you look into that. Most of the inspectors that are at the Division of Inspections, they've been there fifteen or twenty years. They're the same people. There's only one or two new people that are even there. So, they know the process, I know the process, but there are several people who are coming into the city, as you know, we've got some kind of economic boom going on with some of the foreclosures and short sales that are going on. People are buying here. They're coming, they're living, they're sending their children to the school. We need to do better at making this process more accommodating. We need to be more approachable. And I would like to see us have more than just the city website. I actually want to email from, you know, some of you. I do receive some of the notifications, but that's because I'm engaged. There are several of us who would be more engaged if they knew how to be. And I'm just asking that we could do a better job at sending out the notifications, whether it's via the website, whether it's via social media, whether it's be a robopall, whether it be a banner, whatever mechanism that you can use. You want us to be here for you, we need you to be here for us. That's all I wanted to say.
Council President and Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
I think that's a, I'm, right. Yes, I think that's a fair assessment. We will definitely get together with our director. And our goal has always been to continue to improve the quality of lives for the residents. And that being said, you know, we implemented a lot of technology right now to make it easier for the residents and hopefully be able to do all that, obtain seals without even having to come, come into City Hall. So, that's the end of the process. We are in the process of doing that and we will continue to improve on that. But thank you for your comment. That's good.
John A. Percher, Farm Williams, seven, two, three alleys out of Plainfield, now forty-two, twenty-four, West Holly Street, Cranford. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I have a couple of things that I'd like to bring to your attention. One, we need to back our military personnel, especially those from Plainfield who are serving our country, our country, ladies and gentlemen, in defense of our freedom. We failed with that during the war in Vietnam. We lost sixteen men from Plainfield during that war. Those who came back, they were reviled as Nazis murderers and baby killers. I'd like to see that word Nazi retired once and for all. The poor brave soldier there despised, no counted as a stranger. Remember, he says, "Country stay in day and not danger." Secondly, we need to reactivate Meilenberg. The anniversary of September eleventh attacks is coming up sometime next month. We need to reactivate Meilenberg because what's, what if another, what if another attack occurs? We need that hospital very, very badly. We need that hospital, we need that hospital very badly because what if we're attacked What if we're attacked again? The sooner we activate Meilenberg, the better our hit ought to be. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Norman D. Muhammad, thirty-three, Busterville Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey, chairman of the Plainfield Anti-Afropolitans Coalition. So, of the council members, administration, Mayor Matt, and residents of the city of Plainfield, I say, "Good evening." I'm not going to be long. I just got a few points I would like to make. First of all, I'd like to preface my remarks by saying that Ms. Jackson is doing an excellent job, economic development. We had a workforce development seminar that was very well attended by a lot of young people in the city of Plainfield. Council President was there, the mayor was there, very other officials was there. And I think that that workforce development was very, very good and positive in starting a process that very much needed in regards to economic development and inclusion of city residents. I've been a resident of the city of Plainfield for almost sixty years now. The city of Plainfield has been waiting for this bus called Economic Development to stop in the city of Plainfield ever since nineteen sixty-seven. Finally, the bus has arrived. And I would like to leave this meeting tonight feeling as though there are seats and room on the bus for all residents in the city of Plainfield. I give kudos to the mayor because I have been in conversations with him and his administration and very other officials, and he has assured me that he's very much aware of the community concerns of the residents of the city of Plainfield. One footnote in regards to that, and this is addressing the city council, the South Avenue project, the Quinn project, when that pilot was approved, this was included in the pilot agreement that a various number of city residents, city businesses would be included and utilized in that project. So, I direct this questioning to Mr. Sanchez, he can answer in my conclusion about the number of vendors, laborers, craftsmen, trasmens that's been used in that project. I understand that Mr. Cody, Mr. Foggio, Mr. Torber, they are businessmen, they have a business to run, and they expect to have optimal work done in their project. I understand that. But there are many residents in the city of Plainfield, skilled, unskilled, semi-skilled, and non-skilled who come to me on a regular basis in regards to knowing what's going on with work inclusion for the city residents. I relay and respond to them in regards to this, that I spoke to the mayor. He's very proactive in regards to that position. He's doing an excellent job as well as Ms. Jackson. And I would take that same energy back to the community and perhaps we could work collectively in sitting down and addressing any concerns. In conclusion, my organization, anti-Afropolitans Coalition, will be having a seminar slash conference entitled Community Consciousness. We invite all the administrators, the city council people to attend this and see what exactly is on the lines of the people in the community who unfortunately don't attend the city council meetings. So, in conclusion, I'd like to say, Council President McRae, McRae, people call me McRae, McRae, right? You're doing an excellent job. And I would be missed, remiss if I didn't mention my councilwoman, Councilwoman Diane Toppin. All right? I just want to say, Councilwoman, you're doing an excellent job. I know the year is almost over, but don't go nowhere. All right? Because am I a community activist and you're part of the community, we need you to stay active. So, in conclusion, I'd like to say, Mr. Mayor, we appreciate your attentiveness in regards to the community concerns, and we look forward to working with you together in regards to Plainfield residents included in this economic vote.
Tell us when the conferences.
TBA, to be announced.
Council President and Ms. Muhammad, as always, I really truly appreciate all your comments and all the meetings that you constantly have with us and the administration to continue to make sure that we include all the residents that are qualified to work in this practice. In reference to the project on South Avenue, they have included a lot of the vendors, included the company that did the demolition was from Plainfield, and it is part of the agreement. Part of what you just mentioned before, the New Jersey Build Seminar that the economic development took, that it took by, from the economic development, which it was two different meanings, and that's part of what we're trying to do. As I mentioned to you before, the Economic Development Division does have a list of all subcontractors within the city of Plainfield. And I always encourage anyone that you know that is not on the list to go to our division or just give us a call, we will put them on the list. Part of the New Jersey Build was an effort for us to try to make sure that our subcontractors are well-trained and well-equipped. One of the difficulties that we continue to experience is that a lot of our subcontractors are either not, don't have the proper licenses or proper insurances and stuff like that, and that's what we continue to try to work to improve. But your point is well-taken. Again, with our effort, with every development and every developer that we speak to and that we come to an agreement, is to ensure that they use not only our subcontractors, you know, our residents, but also our vendors because, you know, we need to, as I say, we will continue to do that. So, you're always welcome to come to our offices and continue to be with us to improve that, to continue to improve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President.
Just one thing, I do like, Mr. Muhammad, I like your plus analogy. And I would tell you that we've placed a lot of people on the bus. And we want to place more people on the bus. Plainfield's unemployment rate in the month of April was four point four percent. In the month of May, the limit that I can find numbers for, is at four point three percent. I have gone back over twenty years and there has never been a time, based on what we never found, when the unemployment rate in Plainfield has been as low as it is. And that is because we have placed a lot of people on the bus. And we will continue to do that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Flor Gonzalez, fourteen West Avenue. First of all, when they mentioned about economic development, you all bring me to the times when my Williams was here and we did the feasibility study and we have more than five hundred residents. And of course, our mayor, Ma, was also. And we need also to think in that we lost more than eight years with the past mayor that she did nothing but just worked on remarks. But when our mayor, now, Ma, came and he brought Mr. Carlos Sanchez from Economic Development, I was very glad because I know Mr. Sanchez for a long, long, very long time, and I know his job, and I know his connections, and I know that he will bring to this town an economic and progress. But all owe we owe it to our mayor that he fight, the fight that he not supposed to fight alone, but he have a concern then that he not support him, but he did it anyway. And that's why we always have to bring history into the table. And I just came thirty-eight years ago. And so, I'm not going to tell you my name, by the way. But I'm very, very happy to talking about economic development. But we don't ever, ever need to forget where we came from and how we came to the economic development that we are today. It's because the work that the mayor since the beginning have done with his administration. And it's because the support that all of you and all the people that here that believe in the mayor and the administration that we came may be helped. And that's why we here today. But one of the reasons I came today is to support, to support Mr. Carcar. Cancer for us is very dear into our hearts and it's, the world cancer, nobody understanding. And I know a lot of men suffered to say, "I probably have post cancer because they feel they are men, they don't want to say that we probably need to see a doctor." And I know a lot of men that they are Hispanics and that they don't know about go, go by, get the test done. So, we here in the name of the Latin American Coalition, in the name of Pacha, that we will, we will support Mr. Carcar and we do whatever it is to make his program to be successful. Thank you.
See no more for public comment, may I have a motion to close for public comment?
You're second.
On the table?
Aye.
Here you go.
Council President, before you end the meeting, I wanted to remind the residents and remind the city council members of the Eleventh Annual Mayor's Barbecue for the Committee that is coming up for this Saturday. It starts at four P M., so all residents are welcome to attend. We normally have a great churn now and a great conversation when we're there. Number two, I really want to express my most sincere gratitude to our mayor, my boss, and all the city council members and the cabinet members and a lot of the residents that reached out to me while I'm staying in the hospital. Through the grace of God, I'm doing well. I'm back into, into the saddle here. And again, thank you for your prayers, for your well wishes, and thank you for the support while I was out, out there. Thank you.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second. On the table?
Aye.